Programming on WCS TV Channel 180 is made possible in part through donations from your McMinnville State Farm agents, Lee Holland, Norm Barnes, Neil Helton, and Bill Sackman.
First of all, we're presenting, please keep all noise moved to the minimum. If you have a cell phone, please turn it off or turn on vibration. Please remain standing while we have a word prayer and pledge their pledge.
Thank you, Tank. We have with us tonight Brother Johnny Newby to lead our invocation. He is the minister at the First Baptist Church of Smart, Tennessee, and Brother Johnny, it's all yours.
Before we pray, I want to thank each and every one of y'all for having me here, and it's a privilege to be here, and I thank you for everything you do. Let us pray. Father in heaven, we come to you today, Father, thanking you for this day, and it's many blessings. Father, we ask that you be with us in this meeting tonight. Father, let us have an open mind. Father, let us conduct this meeting in a way, Father, that will be pleasing to you. But Father, there's something heavy on our heart right now, Father, of this, our country and our situation and our government. And Father, we ask that you be with each and every one of these men and women as they go about the business. But most of all, Father, we just ask that you forgive us for anything that we've done wrong. Father, we love you, and Father, we respect you, for it's in Jesus Christ's name we pray. And everybody says, amen.
Thank you, Brother Johnny. Salute.
(Inaudible) United States of America, executive authority for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lisa, would you please call the roll, please?
Terry Bell.
Here.
Morris Bond.
Here.
Carl D. Bolden.
Here.
Carl E. Bolden.
Here.
Teddy Boyd.
Here.
Carleen Brown.
Here.
Wayne Copeland.
Here.
Randy England.
Here.
Linda Jones.
Here.
Ron Lee.
Here.
Gary Martin.
Here.
Ken Martin.
Here.
Michael Martin.
Here.
Carolyn Miller.
Here.
Charles Morgan.
Here.
Gary Prater.
David Ray.
Yeah.
Kenny Roberts.
Here.
Scott Ruble.
Here.
Tommy Savage.
Here.
Diane Starkey.
Here.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Here.
Michael Shane Wiltshire.
Here.
Melissa Enzie.
Twenty-two present.
Thank you, twenty-two present, two out. Motion to approve the docket, motion by Commissioner Bond, second, second by Commissioner Starkey. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise. Docket's approved. You have all received your minutes. Are there any additions or any corrections to be made?
Make motion approve. Has a reading.
Got a motion to dispense of the minutes and, and, and dispense, got a motion to approve the minutes and dispense of reading of the minutes is our second. Second by Commissioner Teddy Boyd. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes. We'll move on into our elected officials department, and first on the list is, list is Ms. Linda Hillis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you have any questions regarding my report, I'll be glad to answer them at this time.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Bell, second, second by Commissioner Savage. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes. Animal control, Ms. Petrie.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm the chair. You have my report. If I can answer any questions for you, I'd be glad to.
Motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Savage, second, second by Commissioner Gary Martin. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes. Thank you, Kim. County welfare commissioner, Michael Martin. This is my report. Do anybody have any question? I'll be answered. Motion by Commissioner Bond, second by Commissioner Copeland. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes. Next is the health department, Ms. Fox. Thank you, Andrea.
Good evening. You all should have my report. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Boyd, second by Commissioner Ruble. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Next is IDB quarterly financial report, Ms. Rogers. We'll take Don.
(Inaudible). Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, if I can answer any questions, I'd be glad to.
Motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Lee, second, second by Commissioner David Ray. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes. Thank you, Don.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next on the list is the planning commission, Commissioner Ron Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The report is in the package. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer.
Is that a motion? You motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Carl D. Bolden, second, second by Commissioner Kenny Roberts. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Committee reports, first on the list, budget and finance, Commissioner Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, budget and finance has nothing to report.
Thank you. Buildings and grounds, Carl E. Bolden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, building grounds has nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Economic and agricultural development, Commissioner Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Economic and agriculture development has nothing to report at this time.
Education, Commissioner Starkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, education has nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Financial management, Ms. Linda Hillis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There is no report for financial management at this time.
Health and welfare, Commissioner Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Health and welfare have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Highway and bridge, Commissioner England.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to report real quick, we completed our Whitehall Bridge project, leaving them has, and we had some problems out there with the rain, but as he's told me tonight, that he was out there during our last storm that we had of rain, and it's handled quite well, so, big hand to him and his crew for what a good job they're doing.
Thank you. Policy and personnel, Commissioner Ken Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Policy and personnel has nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Safety, Commissioner Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, safety has nothing to report.
Thank you. Special committee reports, first on the list is County Corrections Partnership Committee, Commissioner Bond.
Mr. Chairman, at this, at this time, CCPC don't have nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Redistricting, Commissioner Michael Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have nothing to report at this time.
Go into our new business, and first item on the list, Commissioner Bell.
Mr. Chairman, this is resolution number one dash two thousand and sixteen, a resolution to authorize the Warren County Executive to submit an application to the Tennessee Department of Environmental and Conservation for Clean Tennessee Energy Grant Program Funds. The buildings and grounds committee met and passed the application to TDEC for the energy grant. The purpose of this grant is to address roofing, lighting issues at the administrative building, courthouse, or jail. The budget and finance committee and financial management met and also passed this resolution, and I so move.
Have a motion, does everybody understand the motion? Have a motion, this is second, second by Commissioner Bond. Anybody want to speak to the motion? What this is, is hopefully up at the courthouse, this would be for far a flat roof, we would be getting fifty percent from the grant. We would have to pay fifty percent, but it sure beat us having to pay the whole amount. Hopefully, we can get this for the flat roof, has been on there twenty years, and hopefully we, it's needing a new roof, and maybe we can get some lighting out of it too, to go in there, or go here, at the jail, so. Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Hold it, hold it, roll, after that, roll call.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
Morris Bond.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden.
Yes.
Teddy Boyd.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
Wayne Copeland.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Linda Jones.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Michael Martin.
Yes.
Carolyn Miller.
Yes.
Charles Morgan.
Yes.
David Ray.
Yes.
Excuse me, Kenny Roberts.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Diane Starkey.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? Twenty-two yes.
Motion passes, twenty-two to zero. Item two, Commissioner Ron Lee, he presents appointments to the Agriculture Extension Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Economic and Agriculture Development Committee met on January seventh to consider recommendations from the Director of Hill and Loudl for appointments and reappointments to the Agriculture Extension Committee. Excuse my voice, I'm getting over a bad call. We, we appointed Gordon Buster Way to a one-year term to expire twenty seventeen, reappointed Jacqueline Hitzkoff to her second two-year term to expire twenty eighteen, reappointed Diane Starkey for her second two-year term to expire twenty eighteen, reappointment Gary Martin for his second two-year term to expire twenty eighteen, and reappointment Wayne Cantrell for his third and final two-year term to expire January two eighteen. Our committee voted four, four to nothing on this, in favor, and I so move.
I have a motion, second by Commissioner Ruble, motion by Commissioner Lee, second by Commissioner Ruble. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes. Thank you. Item number three, Commissioner Ron Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. According to protocol, a county commissioner is appointed by the county commission to serve on the airport commission for his or her four-year term of office. Other members of the airport committee are eligible to serve two consecutive five-year terms. At present, two vacancies exist on the airport commission due to the Sir Joe Howard and Commissioner Billy Earl Jones, and these vacancies need to be filled. And we voted to appoint Ms. Linda Jones to fill, to fulfill Billy Earl's place, and Matt Corley to fill the remainder of Joe Howard's place. We voted four oh, and I so move.
These two terms will run till two thousand and eighteen. I have a motion, is a second, second by Commissioner Carl E. Bond, Boyd, Carl E., I'm sorry, Carl E. Bolden. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise. Item four, Commissioner Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, according to protocol, the county commissioner is appointed by the county commission to serve, um, to, um, let's see, to serve his or her four-year term of office. Other members of the airport zoning board, zoning committee are eligible to serve two consecutive four-year terms. At present, two vacancies exist with the Sir Joel A. Howard and Commissioner Billy Earl Jones, and these vacancies need to be filled. And we voted to, to fulfill Mr. Jones's term with Ms. Linda Jones and Mr. Corley to fulfill Joe Howard's term. I think Billy Earl's Jones is to expire twenty eighteen, and the next term will be twenty twenty. And we also reappointed Keith Bolden for his second and final four-year term to expire January twenty twenty. Our committee voted four oh, and I so move.
Have a motion, is a second, second by Commissioner Ken Martin. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes. Item five, Commissioner Ron Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Economic and Agriculture Development Committee met on January seventh to consider appointment of a green belt representative to the JECDB, present to the JECDB interlocal agreement. The person appointed is to own land qualifying for classification and valuation under Tennessee code annotated. We reappointed, let's see, Commissioner Gary Martin to serve and for a four-year term to expire twenty twenty. We voted four oh, and I so move.
Have a motion, is a second, second by Commissioner Tommy Savage. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes. Item six, again, Commissioner Lee.
Mr. Chairman, we would, I would like to remove this item till a later date, if we can address it later.
Okay, thank you. Item seven, Commissioner Michael Martin.
Health and welfare met to appoint two people to the region solid waste board. We appoint Ronnie Lee and Don Hemmich Jr. to a six-year term to expire in twenty twenty-two. So move.
I have a motion, is a second, second by Commissioner Boyd. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Item eight, Commissioner Ken Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is audit committee appointments. This committee was established in December of two thousand and thirteen to be composed of three financial professionals and two county commissioners. After initial staggering terms were completed, all terms are now four-year terms. The two positions currently held by county commissioners to expire two thousand and sixteen is Randy England and Ken Martin. Policy and personnel committee met on January the fifth to consider these options. The committee voted unanimously to recommend reappointment of Randy England and myself back to this committee, and I so move.
I have a motion, is a second, second by Commissioner Carl D. Bolden. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. Item number nine, that is a appointments to the Public Records Commission, and if you've got your little paper there, it present to the statute of the state Public Records Commission is composed of the following: the county commissioner, county commissioner representative, a judge of the court of record, a genealogist, a county clerk, county trustee, county historian, and archivist. The positions that were held were by Billy Earl Jones and county historian James Dillon, and this is one of the things that the county executives appoints. Of course, with the county historian, that would be Jimmy Haley. I've asked Carl E. Bolden to replace Commissioner Jones, and I would like to have a motion on that. Motion by Teddy Boyd, second by Commissioner Starkey. Anybody want to speak to that motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes. Thank you. Item ten, vacancies exist on the County Corrections Partnership Committee and on the Health and Welfare Committee with the passing of Commissioner Jones. These vacancies will be filled during the January session of the county court, which I will present my revised listing. And on this revised listing that you've got there, Ms. Linda Jones will be taking over the County Corrections Partnership beyond that, and the Health and Welfare, and I would need a motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner Bond, second by Commissioner Gary Martin. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Item number eleven, I would like to present to you tonight, Preston Denny is the interim EMS director with the resignation of Brian Jennings, and I would, he needs to be confirmed by the county commission. I would recommend, I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Lee, second by Commissioner Boyd. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, item twelve. Y'all should have this in your packet. You know who, we went over this the last time. All the people that can't serve, if you've got brother-in-law, sister-in-laws, you can read that, child, grandparent, parent, sibling, grandparents, stepchild, step-parent, stepbrother, stepsister, parents-in-law, son, daughter-in-law, brothers, sister-in-law, anybody in the immediate This will be to fill the vacancy of Commissioner Jones. This appointment will expire in September two thousand and sixteen, along with all of the other financial management committee members. We will accept nominations from each county commissioner, any county commissioners. You must obtain a second for the name that you put in, that you recommend, and commissioners may, at separate times, nominate more than one person, and commissioners nominating a person not present must confirm that the person is willing to serve. All, except, we will accept all nominations unlimited unless motion to cease nominations is passed. And all the commissioners that are nominated, you may vote for yourself and confirm that whoever here is nominated, that you will serve, and you get one, if it's safe, we have two or three people when we have the first roll call, you get one yes vote. You can say no, or nay, or pass, or whatever, but that is considered a no vote. We will organize the names in alphabetical order, and we will have roll call votes, starting at the top, first time, we'll start at the bottom, the second time, and whoever gets the most votes, if we have several, they will be the ones be elected. So, does anybody have any questions on this? Well, the floor is now open for nominations. Mr. Chairman? Yes, Commissioner? I'd like to nominate Linda Jones, please. Okay, we have Linda Jones that's been nominated. The floor is now open for other nominations. I have a motion that all nominations cease.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bond. Does anybody want to speak to this motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise. Okay, then we will have Ms. Linda Jones, we have a motion and a second, all in favor of her. Ms. Jones being on the financial management committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes. So, Ms. Jones, you are now on the financial management committee. Under our announcements, Carol, she, she had some dental work done today, and so she wasn't able to be with us, but she has asked that all of you be sure and get your ethics statements in. I think she said about half of you have got them in, and she would be willing to help any of you if you need it. And also, Levy, he would like to address the commission for a few minutes.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the court, I'm bringing this message tonight from my father. He was going to come to this meeting, and unfortunately, his health didn't permit him, and we talked about it in the past weeks, and, of course, we was real close. And he wanted to thank everybody for naming the building after him. He said, "I just really can't believe it." And I said, "Well, Daddy is true," and he was tickled to death. And the highway and bridge committee that started it back in ninety-seven or eight, and the one that started it this past year, and all the county court members, he wants y'all to know, and myself too, that he really appreciated the building being named after him. And also, he wanted me to thank, you know, Mr. Jack Smithson, when he came in office, was chairman of the highway and bridge, and was instrumental in him and Daddy's foresight of combining all the bookkeeping at the operation of the highway department. And it worked out really well. Daddy was strong-willed about things, and I just want you to know, this is coming from him. And also, you know, from our family, for everybody that came by, said any words, or sent a card, or if you couldn't make it, I knew it was quick, and, and, you know, a lot of things going on, it's a holiday. And also from myself, I appreciate y'all, and Daddy taught me a lot of things, and I never will replace his shoes, I don't intend to, but I'm speaking, you know, for him. And, you know, I said, "Well, why don't you just send him a card and let him read it?" He said, "No, I want to go up there and thank him personally." And that was our plans, and, of course, it didn't work out, but the message still got here, and I just want you to know, from him and the family, and for myself and staff, and all my employees and stuff, and a lot of them, some of them work for him too, and thank you very much for everything, from the bottom of our hearts.
Well, to get to that, I skipped item thirteen, so we'll go back to Ms. Lisa Scott.
This is the list for the notaries. Anna Ramirez, Crystal Mitchell, Juan Flores, Jennifer Cantrell Lassiter, Angela Reed, Stacy Floyd, Patricia Harbin, and David W. Marlowe.
Motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Bond, second by Commissioner Blaine Wiltshire. Anybody want to speak to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion passes. Motion to adjourn. Motion by Randy England, second by Commissioner Ken Martin. All in favor say aye. Opposed likewise. Motion passes. Thank all of you.
Programming on WCS TV is made possible in part by a donation from Security Federal Savings Bank, serving its customers with three convenient Warren County locations. Savings Bank, serving its customers with three convenient Warren County locations.
Programming on WCS TV is brought to you in part by a donation from Bridgestone. Bridgestone, your journey, our passion.